Call committee back to, back to order. Welcome to our meeting of the Standing Committee on Government Operations. I would like to ask all committee members to introduce themselves for the record, starting with Mr. Nakamaiak.
Good morning. Welcome, Hrbenak Mac from Nenakutu.
RJ Simpson, MLH River North.
Michael Mary, MLH for Dachau.
Dejan, good morning.
Kevin Riley, Frame Lake.
And I'm Karen Testor, member for Cam Lake and Chair of the Standing Committee on Government Operations. With me today as well are Committee Researcher Alicia Tomshewix and Committee Clerk Michael Ball. And we're also joined by the Law Clerk, Sheila Person. Today, the Standing Committee on Government Operations will be holding a public hearing on Bill 15, an Act to Amend the Tobacco Tax Act, and Bill 17, an Act to Amend the Income Tax Act. Copies of the bill are available at the back of the room, and we will start with Bill 15 and then consider Bill 17 at 11 o'clock. I would like to thank the Honorable Robert C. MacLeod and his officials for being here today. Minister MacLeod, you can introduce yourself and your staff for the record and proceed with any opening comments for Bill 15.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to committee. We are here this morning to discuss Bill 15, an Act to Amend the Tobacco Tax Act. With me today is Mr. David Stewart, Deputy Minister, Department of Finance. Mr. Jay McQuie is our Controller General, Department of Finance, and Mr. Mike Reddy, Director of Legislation Division, Department of Justice. Also here is Mr. Terrence Coutray, Director of Shared Corporate Services, Department of Finance, and Mrs. Caroline Horn, Manager of Tax Administration. And with the Department of Finance is Mr. Robert Collinson, my Ministerial Special Advisor. Legislation is required to amend the Tobacco Tax Act to allow changes to the tobacco tax collection system to establish a provincial tax duty stamp to be placed on tobacco products sold in the NWT and to eliminate the commission paid to tobacco tax collectors. The establishment of a provincial tobacco tax duty stamp will require that all tobacco products sold in the NWT be marked, stamped, sealed, or labeled with a jurisdictional tax stamp. If the amendments are approved, retailers other than the two stores on reserve in the NWT found to be selling tobacco products marked with the federal excise stamp or referred to as black stock tobacco will be in contravention of the Act and regulations. The introduction of jurisdictional tobacco stamp will also mitigate risks related to smuggling. These changes also simplify the administration and auditing of tobacco tax collection processes by reducing the number of transactions, streamlining the reporting, removing the need for inventory reconciliation, and ensuring that all inventories of tobacco products held by wholesalers are taxed paid. And as wholesalers and retailers will no longer be collecting tobacco taxes on behalf of government, commissions will be eliminated and resulting in an annual savings of approximately $200,000. That concludes my opening comments. Mr. Chair of Committee agrees. Our panel is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. Committee, do you have any questions for the Minister or his staff at this time about Bill 15? Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this, we're looking at using the Manitoba stamp. What are the costs associated with developing our own stamp? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Mr. Cooy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've approached all the major manufacturers to see about the viability of them developing a Northwest Territories stamp. They've all said that we're too small of a jurisdiction to make that viable, so none of the major manufacturers will entertain that. PEI is also a small jurisdiction, and they're in the same boat where they're just too small for the manufacturers to make their own stamp, so they have an agreement with Nova Scotia to use their stamp. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you for that answer. So we just don't have the ability? We outright do not have the ability to make our own stamp, is that what you're saying? Or is it, it's not cost prohibitive for us, it's cost prohibitive for other entities? Are there numbers attached to this? I just want to get some specifics, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Mr. Cooy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've never gotten into the cost because it's just no manufacturer will develop an Northwest Territories stamp, so we just don't have that option. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cooy. Anything further for the Minister? All right, hearing, Mr. Riley.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I guess I just want to try to understand how this system is going to work with these changes. Any tobacco products that are brought into the Northwest Territories are going to have to come from Manitoba, or they will have a Manitoba stamp is going to be put on here in the Northwest Territories? How's this system actually going to work? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cooy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So right now, our retailer is purchased from licensed wholesalers, so under the legislation you need to be a licensed wholesaler. So there's currently 11 active wholesalers, they're pretty much across Canada, that do issue tobacco to them. So when a wholesaler places the order from a manufacturer, it's destined for which jurisdiction it would be going to. So when the manufacturer sells it to the wholesaler, it is marked Alberta, Manitoba, whichever stamp. Currently, Northwest Territories does not have its stamp, so it's marked with what we call the black stock tobacco. So basically, whenever a wholesaler places an order, which then goes on to the retailers, the manufacturer packages accordingly for whichever jurisdiction it is going to. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cooy. And Mr. MacLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thanks to Mr. Riley or to Mr. Cooy's comments, Mr. Riley, questions, do we have to buy from Manitoba? No, we don't.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Minister. Mr. Riley.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Okay, I think I'm starting to understand this a little bit better. So the taxes then are remitted by the wholesaler directly to Manitoba? Manitoba accounts for that somehow, and then they're remitted back to us? Or how does this system work? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Now, the taxes would be remitted to the GNWT directly. We're just using the Manitoba stamp. That would be affixed to it.
Mr. Riley.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So the actual taxes then that are paid are what Manitoba charges or what we charge? And how does this handle from sort of an accounting perspective? Taxes are directly remitted to us at the time of sale by, from the manufacturers to the wholesalers that then send the product to the Northwest Territories? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cooy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So under the current system, as it is today, under the current legislation, we kind of use the sales method of tax collection. So a wholesaler place an order from a manufacturer, no taxes paid at that time. The wholesaler will then sell the product to the retailer and collect the tax from the retailer and then remit that to the government. Under the proposed method that this legislative amendment, if approved, we would move to what is called the purchase method, where when the wholesaler purchases it from the manufacturer, they will remit the tax owing on that directly to the government and then charge the retail accordingly. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just one point, just that was specific in your question. The tax rates would be the NWT tax rate, so we would continue to set our own tobacco tax rate. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Riley.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So what's in this for Manitoba? We're using their stamp. Do they, what sort of control, if any, do they have over our tax rates? And what is in this for Manitoba? Do we have to remit a portion to Manitoba or something? Is there an administrative charge that they get or something? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Minister MacLeod.
We haven't negotiated the arrangement yet, but we're not anticipating that there'll be anything in it for Manitoba. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Minister. Mr. Riley.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll just have to mull that over for a minute, but thanks.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you. There must have been some talks, I'd imagine, with Manitoba. And has there been any indication that they might want to cut of this? And are you aware of how it works with, you said PEI, and I think Nova Scotia share the same stamp? So is there some sort of revenue sharing in that agreement that you're aware of? Thank you.
Mr. Cooy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have had, we have had talks with Manitoba already. Their only requirement is that we have the same tax collection point as them, so moving to the purchase method as opposed to the sales method. That's their only requirement to date. So we do have a political commitment to enter into, well, we would have to enter into with Manitoba is just a MOU, just an agreement. So we are using the simple, as our first draft is the agreement between Nova Scotia and PEI, which does not speak to any kind of revenue sharing. It's basically just a jurisdictional thing to use the stamp, and it's a fairly simple agreement. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cooy. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How much money does the government expect to generate or, I guess, save from lost taxes with this, with this change to the Tax Act? How much are we looking at bringing into the tax system once this is implemented? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Mr. Cooy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just a change to use the stamp and get better, I think it's more about a better control over potential contraband. This will facilitate a lot of, easier to track the movement of product from a manufacturer to the Northwest Territories and throughout the system. It's just easier auditing, there'll be less transactions on the tax paid when it's paid upfront by a wholesaler. So we're not anticipating any increased revenue. We do believe that the current system is working, but this would be obviously stronger controls and easier to audit throughout the entire system and clarify if there is contraband coming into our system. This would allow us to, allow us to catch that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. McNeely.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I commend the department for taking this amendment initiative here on a proactive collection basis here rather than our tax money sitting at the retail shelf. It'll be submitted on wholesale, so I'd just point that out there. I'd rather see immediate cash flow than when it's sold, when it's sold. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. I take that as a comment. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you for getting back to my previous question. So the GNWT believes there's no lost tax revenue to contraband product? Is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Mr. Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So we collect around $15.6 million worth of tobacco tax a year. Do I believe that there are people that do purchase cigarettes elsewhere and bring them into the territories? Undoubtedly, that happens. We've done studies as well as internal audit, looked at the issue of broader-based contraband coming into the territory. It's very difficult to estimate that exactly in terms of just using things like broader consumption rates and smoking rates and those sorts of things, but there's been no evidence found that there is widespread. We've also smuggling in of cigarettes. We've also checked with the RCMP to see if they've had any issues associated with that, and they're not seeing anything that would lead us to believe that there's widespread smuggling activity as well. So we don't think that there'll be, there is widespread smuggling. This will, as Mr. Cooy pointed out, help us with that monitoring and certainly lessen the reporting burden that's out there, but we don't see it as a huge problem right now. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you. So the difference is that, I guess, the wholesalers are going to be paying taxes upfront. Is this going to affect wholesalers in the territory? Instead of, I guess, collecting taxes incrementally as a product is sold, now they're going to be paying upfront for an entire shipment, I guess. So are there wholesalers in the territory, and how will this affect them? Thank you.
Mr. Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I think you've understood what the difference is, is in the past, when the old system, the wholesaler collected from retailers as they made orders. Now, the wholesaler will be paying it when they get it from the manufacturer. There are probably some impacts in terms of cash flow, because they obviously will have that product and then sell it off to the retailers. My guess is, and this is truly speculation, is that wholesalers probably don't keep a ton of inventory, so I don't think that the cash flow issues are going to be substantive, but there certainly is an impact that they're paying it upfront and then selling off the product to the retailers. At the same time of that, though, there is much less burdensome in terms of reporting and collecting those taxes from those retailers that were in place under the old system. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you. You said the government's assumption is that wholesalers do not keep a ton of inventory? Is that, is that from discussions with industry, or is that just, where'd you get that idea from? Thank you.
Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I think that's just mostly from practice of talking with wholesalers generally, not specific to the tobacco industry, but just looking at business practices generally is when wholesalers tend to order product is when they have product to sell. And we certainly did a consultation with the wholesalers, and I don't think that was raised as an issue that was of concern to the wholesalers that we deal with on the tobacco products.
Mr. Simpson. Mr. Nakamaiak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Getting back to Mr. Simpson's comment and question, I wonder, for myself and Mr. McNeely's regions, where they're further in the north, and sometimes we have shipments once a year, I wonder what kind of impacts this will have for, say, three of my communities, and they ship them in by barge, and that's once a year, and what's it going to have for the cost of food and other services in the region? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Nakamaiak. Mr. Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I mean, it is a tobacco tax, so I don't see that it would have impact on the food costs in the region. And the same tax is being collected from, or the same rates are being applied to tobacco, so I don't think it would impact the consumer at that end either in terms of even the tobacco products themselves. So unless I'm missing the question, I don't think it would have major impact on consumers for food products, et cetera. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Nakamaiak.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. My question earlier was, some communities, they'll ship in tobacco or dry goods once a year, and for some communities, that may mean a lot of tobacco, and I'm just wondering if that would have a ripple effect on other, on food and other things like that, where some companies may not have the overhead, as like the Northwest Company, who it doesn't really matter whether they bring the price up or not. I know it may affect some small companies in my region who own small businesses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I don't think it's going to have an impact on food or anything like that or even the shipment, because the retail companies, say the Northwest Trading Company, would buy the product from the wholesaler who's already paid the tax on it, and it would be shipped like they normally ship it as they need it. So I don't think it will have a major impact if they bring in, if they brought in product before on the barge to retail in the community, they will continue to do that. If they brought it in by plane to retail in the community, they would continue to do that. So I don't think it's going to have an effect at all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. Mr. Riley.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just want to go back to this issue of potential impacts on wholesalers. How many wholesalers are there in the Northwest Territories? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Minister MacLeod.
There's one operating in the Northwest Territories.
Mr. Riley.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So were there specific consultations held with the one wholesaler here in the Northwest Territories? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Minister MacLeod.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to go back to this issue of a stamp and so on. I guess there was some previous communications with the government of Manitoba over using their stamp, but wouldn't it be reasonable to have an arrangement in place before the legislation is passed? If we don't have an arrangement in place, what if they, they have a different government perhaps now? Will they change their mind? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Minister MacLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, we have a political letter from the government of Manitoba that they are on board with this, and that's the reason we'll proceed. If we had made an agreement with them before coming to, before coming to committee with the legislation, then I'm sure we'd hear about that too, but we have a political commitment from the government of Manitoba. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. Mr. Riley.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chair. So I'm still trying to understand why we can't use our own stamp. Is this like it's too much to print, design it? Our manufacturers don't want to do it because the amount of product is too small? I'm just trying to understand what the resistance is to having a different stamp for the Northwest Territories. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Minister.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, if the manufacturer had agreed that we could have our own stamp, then we would have our own stamp, but they, as we said before, they just said we're too small of a jurisdiction, and they've said that to PEI, that's why PEI is partnering up with Nova Scotia, and we are partnering up with Manitoba, so the manufacturer said we're just too small.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. Mr. Riley.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So why would we go with Manitoba instead of Alberta, where most of the stuff is probably brought up from? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Riley. Mr. Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I think we talked to a few jurisdictions when we were looking at this. One of the things you would want to do in, certainly Alberta, would be an example of that. If you're too close to the province where you're using their stamp, the ability to go purchase there and bring in product that's purchased from Alberta, as an example, would be much greater than it would be for a further away jurisdiction. Obviously, PEI was okay with that, because they went right next door. I think we wanted to have a little bit of distance, and Manitoba was willing, and so that's why we ended up with Manitoba, but I'm not sure you'd necessarily want to be right next door in the jurisdiction unless that was, that was what was the only option that would be available.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Minister MacLeod.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And Manitoba's tax rate is comparable to ours. I think we're, after April 1st, we're number one in the country again, and Manitoba's number two. Number two.
Number three.
Number three? Okay, we dropped them to number three.
The committee noted that, actually, in our initial review of this, that the NWT will have to maintain its tax similarly to Manitoba's to disincentivize smuggling. If there's too wide a tax ratio, we'd encourage it, so we have reviewed that issue. Mr. Riley, anything further?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm just trying to throw in the last little bit there, because I think I heard earlier that I asked what was in it for Manitoba, whether our tax system had to be comparable in any way, and I thought the answer was no, and now I'm hearing something different, so maybe I could just get some clarification on that. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. There's no requirement for us to have the exact same, but I think the chair noticed that noted this as well. If you had a great variation between the tax rates charged, there's more incentive to go down and purchase in that jurisdiction. So the more similar the tax rates are, it lowers that incentive to maybe go and try to see if you could purchase cigarettes there. The other thing to remember, though, while you want them similar, Manitoba also has a sales tax that we don't have, so that creates a difference as well. So I think, while it's useful if the rates are similar, there's no requirement for them to be the same. It just does, it could potentially, if Manitoba, for whatever reason, decided to drop their tobacco tax to one cent, when ours is around 30 cents or a little higher, that gap is, I think what the chair was suggesting, would lower that incentive or maybe increase that incentive, I guess, to actually go to Manitoba to purchase. So there is a relationship, but there's no requirement. As it stands right now, their tobacco tax rate is very similar to ours, so that incentive to go to that other jurisdiction and purchase really doesn't, there is no incentive, particularly when you add on the sales tax on top of that.
Mr. Stewart. Mr. Riley. Can you conclude this line of question?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you. So I'd just like to clarify, is the GNWT's thought on this that this is going to be a revenue-neutral change to the legislation? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Mr. MacLeod.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're saving $200,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you. My other concern, will this have any negative effects for businesses in the Northwest Territories? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Minister MacLeod.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. We don't think so.
Thank you. There was some discussion around the, this is an evaluation of the current system of taxation and moving as it was prior to the implementation of this legislation. Have we ever done a comprehensive financial audit of the tobacco taxation? And apart from just looking at the statistical variances, and I believe the deputy minister mentioned some internal audit work, have we actually done a financial audit of the tax collections on tobacco tax? Mr. Cooy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Because back in 2012, our Internal Audit Bureau did a very formal review and a very comprehensive financial review of the tobacco tax, just to ensure that, you know, again, we were collecting all the tax that was due to us. So, you know, through that, through that audit, they did look at all the products from manufacturers to wholesalers. They did do significant financial audits on some retailers. You know, they did a lot of sampling of around the entire system just to ensure, and then comparing all that to the statistics around smoking and, you know, not only just smokers or routine smokers to average consumption a day. And they did, they did a comprehensive review to ensure that the revenue we collected was in the neighborhood, and the review came back positive that we were in the neighborhood and we were not missing out on significant revenue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cooy. Mr. MacLeod, are, is the committee able to see the findings of that internal audit review? Mr. Minister.
Yeah, my understanding is that we've shared information with MLAs in the past, and if there's an opportunity here, we will share that, our findings with committee.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. Can you make that commitment to share that as we continue to review this piece of legislation?
I just did.
Okay. Sorry. That's the opportunity. Okay, sorry. That's the opportunity. All right. Anything further on, for the minister or his staff? Okay, hearing, okay, hearing nothing further from committee, I will thank the minister and his staff for answering our questions to today, for today. We're now, committee, we now have concluded this stage of the review. And Minister, if, Minister, if you have any closing comments, you may make them now.
No, just thanking committee for their time as always, and look forward to feedback from committee as we move forward with this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. And I will ask for, if there's anyone from the, after the minister clears the witness table, I'll ask if anyone from the general public would like to comment on Bill 15 and act to amend the Tobacco Tax Act.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Roger Walker, and I'm one of the owners of Northern Snack Foods Limited here in Yellowknife, and we operate a division of Northern Snack Foods, which is territorial tobacco products. And we are the, we are the only resident licensed wholesale collector in the Northwest Territories. So as I said, thank you so much for this. We began operations as the only resident wholesale collector back in 2010. And it soon, soon became obvious to us that the GNWT was not collecting millions of dollars in tobacco taxes. I made the GNWT aware of this situation in 2011. So included in my submission is a letter I wrote to Mr. Doug Doak in 19, or 19, I'm sorry, 2014, explaining back then why the amendments that are contemplated today in Bill 15 would not accomplish the goals of the GNWT. So I know you've had the opportunity to review that, and so I will try to clarify any questions that you may have regarding why the use of another province's stamp will not work, in my opinion, and should my submission not be clear. I also wish to clarify why having wholesalers pay the NWT tax at the time of purchase will only affect my operation. And again, if there are any questions arising from my submissions on Once that's completed, I'd like to go over a press conference from 2012 that documented and documents and further explains the loophole in the GNWT's collection system and how to remedy the situation. This press, press conference was done by former MLA Darryl Dolaney back in 2012, as I said. I've also provided a copy of a tax memo from Alberta. I'd like to make sure that all members understand how these tax memos work and why they, along with the actual audits of wholesalers, will solve the GNWT's tax collection problem. Again, thank you for allowing me to do this, and I'd like to take any questions on, on my submission.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Other questions to Mr. Walker at this point? Mr. Simpson.
Thank you. You say that there's millions in unclaimed taxes not going to the GNWT. We had the minister here, they, they said there was, they said they weren't missing out any, I guess, tax revenue, basically, is the impression I got. How do you come to those, those figures of millions of dollars?
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Mr. Walker, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we'll get into with Mr. Dolaney, I had, Mr. Dolaney's press conference, the numbers that he uses are taking, are taken from Stats Canada. And although my personal belief is that there's actually more tax missing than what Stats Canada numbers say, the numbers that Stats Canada puts forward is six to $10 million less in collections than what the GNWT is saying they are collecting. As I said before, I'm, I'm quite sure, well, I haven't said that yet, but I'm quite sure I know how this is happening, and I would be more than happy to walk you through it. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Simpson?
The committee would like it, I'd like to move on through it if you don't mind.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, if you could, Mr. Walker, I think committee would, would appreciate hearing the.
So as, as I said in my submission, all of this, this gets down to, to tax memos. So when, when a wholesaler purchases product, right now, the vast majority of product that's coming into the NWT comes through Alberta. So when a wholesaler purchases product for the NWT, it gets shipped, for the most part, to Alberta. And when it lands in Alberta, a tax memo is sent to the Alberta government, saying how much tobacco has been sent into the province, and it is at the Alberta tax rate, which is, today is approximately $10 less. It used to be $17 less than the NWT rate. However, so when the wholesaler, and I'm not mentioning any names here, when a wholesaler could conceivably send, I, in my submission, I used just 100 cartons as, as an example. They will send 100 cartons into the Northwest Territory and charge the store that they're sending it to the full NWT tax rate. And then the store pays that tax rate. Then the wholesaler then sends only, or reports to the government, because this is self-reported, reports to the government instead of 100 cartons, they have sent 50 cartons, as an example. They've charged out the whole 100 cartons at the NWT tax rate. They have had to pay the Alberta tax rate when they, when they landed the product there from the manufacturer. They submit to the GNWT on their report that they have sold 50 cartons, and they apply to the Alberta government to get their Alberta tax back on those same 50 cartons. In fact, they've sent 100 in, and so the difference is they've charged full NWT tax on all 100, and so then they pocket the difference between the NWT tax and the Alberta tax on the 50 cartons. And I have to, I have to apologize. I'm way better at putting things down on paper than I am talking. So I, I hope that kind of clarified that a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walker. You're doing fine. I know it's your, your first time appearing before a committee of this nature. So thank you, and we are very patient. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you. That was very clear, actually. So it sounds like this is your alleging criminal activity. Has there been any criminal investigations by RCMP or anyone on this, on this matter?
Just a minute, Mr. Walker. Just wait until you're acknowledged by the chair. Mr. Walker, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, there hasn't been. As I said, I brought this to the intention of the GNWT back in 2011, and they had the Internal Audit Bureau look into it. And the Internal Audit Bureau, I am told, spent 600 hours looking into, into this. And unfortunately, even by, in my response from the minister, there were no audits done. There were no audits done. This, what was done here was a reconciliation. And as long as the tax memos don't flow, that's the only way, and without audits, that they could ever, ever find this out, because the Alberta tax is paid, the GNWT tax is paid. And so when they look at the amounts that are shipped in and the amounts that they've collected, they're sure to match, because it's self-reported. So, and I'll get into this later, but the way to, way to curb that is to have all of the tobacco landed from the manufacturers into the GN, into the NWT, because that triggers a tax memo, an NWT tax memo. And then the, our GNWT knows exactly how much tobacco is coming in and how much tax that they can expect from this. And if there are no audits, I'm sorry, if there's no audits performed on any other wholesalers, then what's happening today isn't going to stop. Anyway, I'm sorry, I rambled on there a little. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you. So your understanding of the bill, the proposed amendments, is that tobacco will not be landed in the NWT, and the GNWT will not be directly informed of the tobacco that is purchased by the wholesalers for distribution in the territory? Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, right now, the only, the only tax memo that flowed to the GNWT is for the tobacco that we purchase from the manufacturers, because the manufacturers land it here at our facility. And as I said, that triggers the, an NWT tax memo. All the other southern wholesalers, the tax memo goes to the province where the product is taken possession of or landed. And as I said, most of it is Alberta.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Walker, I see you've provided committee with an example of one of those tax memos. And just, just a moment, Mr. Walker. In the upper right-hand corner, there's a province of tax, and this memo's indicating Alberta. Is that along the lines of what you're saying about the product landing and being taxed where it lands, Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chair, yes, that's exactly right. This, this particular one, as an example, this, the 51,200 cigarettes and 30,000 fine cut there was landed in, in Alberta. And the $19,240 is, that's the tax rate. That's the amount of tax that that tobacco attracts. And it's done at the Alberta tax rate, because that's where they took possession of the product. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Simpson, do you, further?
This is something I might have to clarify later, but I thought the department was up here, they said the wholesalers will pay upon purchase from the manufacturer directly to the GNWT. So it would be bypassing this, this system. So I guess that's something the committee's going to have to get clarification on from the department. And I'll turn it forward to someone else for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I had asked the minister and his staff what sort of direct consultation? Well, I asked how many wholesalers there were here in the Northwest Territories and whether there had been direct consultation with the wholesalers here. Presumably, you're the only wholesaler. And what was your view of the consultation around these changes? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, well, the only consultation that I had on, on these amendments was in 2014. There was a letter from Mr. Doak at that time, looking for parties that are, could be affected or would be affected by these amendments then to make a submission. And that's the letter that I, I have provided to the committee here. Since then, no, I wasn't consulted when this was, was done. Actually, I found out that it was, that it was happening just afterward, had already passed second reading. So.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks. That's all I need to hear. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. McNeely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with my two previous colleagues here, Mr. Walker. And I'm just trying to get an understanding, as well as what Mr. Simpson had mentioned earlier here, trying to keep track of the flow of the carton, where it goes and so on, and your sample of the, of the ticket here. And taking into account what the minister and his staff were saying earlier, and my understanding, you're the only wholesaler in town or in the NWT, so that would create a monopoly for you, should everything go the way I think you would like to see it go. So accountability, I don't have an issue with that. It's, it's business. Anybody else could apply for a wholesale license. But just tracking the whole system, I would say is, is I'm trying to grasp or find out how it can be, and listening to the minister, rather than collecting the tax once the carton is sold from the shop, the store downtown, that's when we get our taxes. I would rather see the tax come upon purchase from the manufacturer, as per the sample here, rather than somebody sitting on capital, which they can immediately get from wholesale arrangements. So I'm, I'm, I guess I got no question. I'm just trying to get a better understanding. I've listened to you, and I'm understanding as well. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chair, if I may, because this gets back to the, kind of the second part of this, this amendment, in my mind, right now, we, we are the only wholesaler that has to carry inventory. And all the southern invent, all the southern wholesalers, they, they know how much product they're going to need to satisfy their stores. And so they can order it, but it doesn't become NWT stock until it gets sold. And so southern wholesalers, even if they use the Manitoba stamp, aren't going to be required to pay the NWT tax until they sell it in. My company, and we're a small wholesaler, right? The tax, tax amounts are huge, as you know, and depending on the day, we carry anywhere from about $350,000 to $500,000 worth of tax in inventory. But if this amendment goes through, and I have to come up with that money, I have to come up with up to half a million dollars, plus about half of last month's, because currently, the wholesalers don't have to pay the tax for 20 days. And so if this amendment goes through as it is, I'm going to have to come up with about, somewhere in the neighborhood of $700,000 or $750,000. And the return, this is very small margin business. And the returns, it's just no, it's, it's no use me even doing this. And again, we're the only ones that this will affect, should this, should this happen, because we're the only ones that have to carry NWT stock inventory. I hope that.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. McNeely?
Yeah, I think just to clarify and avoid confusion, let's just do away with the, for discussion purposes, do away with the Manitoba stamp. The stamp just confirms The stamp just confirms duty paid, correct?
Mr. Walker?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, yes, yes, it would. Whoever, whichever wholesaler purchase it, purchases it, and yes, they would be paying the manufacturer for the product, they still have to pay the GNWT, the GNWT's tax. And as long as there are no audits on these wholesalers that are abusing the system, that portion isn't going to change.
Thank you. Mr. McNeely?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I would say probably the real dilemma or the real problem would be because it's self-regulating, and you use an example of shipping 100 cartons and only accounting for 50, so I guess that's probably where the gap is, that we're trying to get true sales on taxable income, correct? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, that's exactly, that's exactly right, and that's why, getting back to the tax memos, if this, if all the tobacco was landed in the NWT from the manufacturers, that tax memo goes directly to the GNWT, so you know exactly how much is coming in here, and how much tax NWT rate is expected from that. You have to, they have to provide audits on these other wholesalers to close that door, otherwise, it will just continue to happen, even, even other than the stuff that they're not landing here, it's just still going to keep coming in, exactly the way it's happening right now. The, if the GNWT did land everything here, and you're absolutely right, we are the only licensed wholesaler. And I guess if you look at it that way, it would create a monopoly, but I look at it a little bit like the liquor board. The GNWT says how much they can sell it for. They regulate that, or at least they used to, right? And so, that would be the same thing with us as the resident wholesaler. That way, your tax memos flow, and we would agree on the compensation to us for doing this. And, I mean, contrary to maybe popular belief, there's not a lot of money in the wholesale of tobacco, if you're following the rules properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I'm going to move to Mr. Simpson now.
Thank you. So, just to be clear on this, I asked the department, is this going to have any negative effects for NWT businesses? And they said no. But you're saying that you're going to have to keep three-quarters of a million dollars of basically working capital upfront in order to make a purchase, and that kind of sounds like a negative effect for an NWT business. So, and I guess that just goes to Mr. O'Reilly's point with consultation. Did you sit down with the department and have this discussion, basically, that you're having with committee right now? Do they know all this? Or I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chair, no. As I said, I responded to a request from the finance, I believe it was finance, from Mr. Doak in 2014, and that was the extent of it. So.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Simpson?
I guess that's where we come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Now, just for clarification, Mr. Walker, you did bring this issue to the attention of the government in 2012, 2011, around that time, and there was an audit, and we did hear that evidence from the ministers before you presented. Perhaps you could just speak to that briefly?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, and because I became aware that the GNWT was not collecting millions of dollars in tax, I approached, I approached the GNWT, and they had a look at my allegations, and they had the Internal Audit Bureau come out, and we went over what my concerns were, if you will, and how I thought this was happening. And they did their work, however, as I said, and even from a prior letter from the minister, which I can provide to you after, it wasn't an audit, it was a reconciliation, really. And so, there was, yeah, there was lots of work done, but when, at the end of the day, if it's self-reported that this much was moved into the territories, and they say, well, yeah, we moved this much in, we paid you this much, they're bound to match. So, without audits, it, actual audits, it just won't work.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. My actual audit, you mean an independent, an independent from government audit? Is that more or less what you're speaking of?
Well, yes, or no, the, yes or no. Actual audits, the GNWT audited my operation. I don't recall what year it was, it was within a year or two after I brought this forward, and it took them two weeks to audit my small little operation. So, to actually audit a Northwest company, or a Wallace and Carey, or federated co-op, I don't know how long it would take them. And I think the costs, and that's just my personal opinion, the costs of doing that, even though they should be done on a regular basis, I think the costs of doing that are, not that they're prohibitive, but they just believe that it's going to cost too much. And so, it's, I don't believe it's ever been done.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And just noting the time, we've almost, we're close to exceeding where we're at with this portion of our hearing today, but I do want to allow Mr. O'Reilly to ask his questions, and then we will wrap up this portion of the public hearing. Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So, I'm just trying to understand what the real solution is here, then. We need to have these tax memo, we need to have our own stamp, then, so that when the product is brought into the Northwest Territories, it's, the taxes are paid directly by the manufacturers. Is that what we really need? And I can understand how it would work here in Yellowknife in this part of the Northwest Territories, but how would it work in a place like Anuvik, where clearly, they probably get stuff through Whitehorse? So, any sort of thoughts on what the real solution is here to help us through this? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Walker?
Yes, there are two parts to that. All three territories, Nunavut, Yukon, and the Northwest Territories currently use black stock, and that's because the population base is so small, and so, I mean, they were correct. The manufacturers really do not want to do an NWT-specific stamp. That would go a long ways, but however, I just don't believe that's going to happen. So, the tax memo system, if it's applied properly, will work. We send product to Anuvik, to customers right now, all across the territories, you know, they're smaller customers. But, so, we can ship it to anywhere in the NWT, and so, it can, it certainly can work. Again, as I said, the tax memo system will work for you, because it allows tracking of, and some control over the tobacco coming in here, and to the point, to your point that it would cause a monopoly, as I said, that is easily controlled. I mean, I couldn't just go and start charging X, because if that happened, it could be worked through the government, that very much like the liquor store system. And then, you have control back. Right now, you have no control.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Well, that brings us to the end of our witness testimony, but I'd like to thank you for being here, Mr. Walker, and for providing your expertise on this issue, and I'll allow you to have a brief summation of your testimony today. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I will try to be brief. I'm sorry. We didn't get to Mr. Dolaney's press conference, but I think that I would really like, because it is a public document, if you could have a look at that, because it further explains this loophole and how this thing should be looked after. I do strongly believe that these amendments, if they're passed as they are, can potentially shut my business down, and as the only resident wholesaler here today, I've been watching for these tax collection problems and reporting them whenever I can, and if I'm not here, that's not going to happen anymore. However, I don't believe the stamp will work, because without audits, nothing is going to change from what's happening now, and because the GNWT is collecting less than even what Stats Canada says they should be collecting, they're short $6 to $10 million a year. And so, that has to be addressed. I've been trying to get this thing addressed since 2011. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, and thank you for being here today. Seeing no further public submissions on Bill 15, does committee agree to schedule a clause-by-clause review of the bill at a later date?
Agreed.
Thank you, committee. With that, we will, we're done with Bill 15, and we will move on to our public review of Bill 17. Thank you, Mr. Walker.